Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day, Lord. We thank you for so many blessings here in Montgomery County. Lord, you ask to be with us as we sometimes have some difficulties with murders and different things going on here inside the city of Montgomery. Just if you would, Lord, we need you to intervene and to help us help ourselves sometimes. Lord, just thank you for this gathering today. Thank you for the Montgomery County employees. And just ask you be with this commission today that we make decisions based on what's best for our entire county. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Yes, sir. First, we'll go over our visitors for today. We'll have a report from City-County EMA. Sheriff Derek Cunningham, Manager of Public Affairs Hannah Hawke, Executive Director Tommy McKinnon with Baptist Healthcare Foundation, Alvin Tucker with Fortitude Leadership Academy, and Ann Sykes from Montgomery Education Foundation. We'll start with Kristy Thornton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Montgomery County has had 22,260 confirmed COVID cases, 1,108,785 more citizens have contested at this point. 504 deaths that have been confirmed. Our daily 14-day average is down 2.48 percent, which is phenomenal, really good mitigating those efforts where there'd be social distancing or staying at home or sick or going to the doctor. Currently, our Montgomery County vaccine, we are seeing 39.71 percent of our population has received at least one dose of our COVID vaccine. 53,309 of our citizens have completed their vaccine series, and 71,186 have at least received one dose. And that's absolutely, I'm sure, an amazing effort of vaccine under their leading way of vaccine effort. Currently, our vaccine breakdown is, that's one of the big questions, and I've been asked several times by Commissioner Harris, 42.21 percent of our African-American population has received vaccine, and that is about 30,100 African-Americans. 34.08 percent or 24,300 of our Caucasian community. And our Asian community, which does make up the largest population outside of the two main, is 5.11 percent or 3,600 of those. So that is phenomenal. With that, many of our citizens have made that effort and chose to be vaccinated. We understand that there's still vaccine hesitancy. We understand we do have anti-vaccines, and we absolutely understand that. But the efforts are going currently, and today at 3:00 PM, there will be a vaccine clinic at the Victor Two Lake. So if anyone wants to get there, if you don't have a way to get there and want, you can call 211 if there are Uber rides available to take you to the vaccine clinic. And on May 20th at 8:00 AM, they will be in the Metropolitan Church at 3108 Bridge of Parks. Again, this is free. The first 100 people to get taken $50 gift card. So they're trying to make every effort and increase all opportunities for people who did it, and they have the risk protection issues. Issues have been worked out through either Uber rides or several of our communities who can still take the people to the vaccine.
Kristy, how are the incentives funded?
That I do not know. That's in the mayor's office. The mayor's office is the care of that.
The mayor's doing that?
Where they're all in.
So you don't know if they need any help on that?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm sure they always appreciate that. Any questions?
On that second dose, the ones who've gotten the first dose, Kristy, I know you said it's going to have to be up to them in terms of, you know, showing some responsibility. Any change of minds in terms of trying to do an outreach for the ones who need that second dose and for whatever reason hadn't gotten it yet?
We're actually working on that. We have two different groups with partners in town and one of our churches that are doing a community saturation. We're with EMA, we're working on doing a neighborhood vaccination clinic. So if any of you have a church or a community center you would like to have a vaccine clinic, we actually have our own vaccine now, so we're able to go out to that area and do the vaccine clinics for the population that might still want it, that can't come out, that don't want to go sit in a line, or don't want to drive across town, is that they're actually taking the vaccine to the neighborhoods. So we're trying to arrest efforts. And our thoughts on what's on the community calendar, if we were to say Madison Park, for example, that week before neighborhood, do that on Saturday, the week before the community health partners and the ambassadors will be in that neighborhood passing out literature and answering any questions for them.
So we do have a list of all those who've gotten just one dose. If we really wanted to get assertive with that, we could do it in terms of trying to reach that population?
No, sir. You're not allowed to have that information.
No, I'm saying.
And we can't, but we do try to narrow it down by zip code.
Someone has the information. The information is being maintained, right?
Through the Alabama Department of Public Health. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy.
Now, we can go over the items to be considered in the formal session. We'll consider amendment number one to the contract with Gulf State distributors for tasers and accessories for the sheriff's office. Consider amendment number one to a contract with liberty disposal for dumpster rental and trash collection. Consider renewal of a lease agreement with Williamson Properties for purchase of clay and gravel.
You're Michael, though.
I think we're doing some adjusting. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Does anyone have anything to add?
Yes. $2,000, Cleveland Avenue YMCA. And...
I'm sorry, is that?
For Cleveland Avenue YMCA general campaign.
What was the red leather that Doris Prince Shaw sent you? Did you put it in the packet?
No, sir. The packet had gone out, and I thought we had put one in everyone's place. Loretta, can you go get those off my desk? Or either they're in the copy room? I'm sorry.
We can move on. I'm just going to give her $3,000 for the brick layers. They have, I forgot exactly what they said, ran over it or something.
Here it is. I'm sorry. Thank you.
What number we all got? Six?
So would that come out of your designated revenue?
Yes, ma'am.
And you said?
3,000.
Thank you.
We aren't designated already?
No, sir. I just wanted to... Are there... Next, we'll consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. Does anyone have anything to add there?
I do. I need to do $1,000 to Delrayda Elementary School. For principals.
All right. Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue. Commissioner Walker has added items, 4,000 to the Montgomery Dragon Boat Race, and 2,500 to AUM Baseball Minor All-Stars.
The Dragon Boat Race, can we do that someday?
Well, just as a caveat to that, they are not reinstating the Dragon Boat races this year. It's a very expensive endeavor, and I push them to do it every year. But a part of the activities is a stand-up paddleboard race. So the monies I'm giving are for a stand-up paddleboat paddleboard race on the Alabama River. But it's, you know, they're coming from Florida. It's a big regional deal. It's a good event down on the riverfront. So, you know, I'm happy to do it myself. If anybody wants to chip in, they may as well. Hey, that's me.
Florence, I want to add $2,500 out of designated to whom it may concern.
Ron, how much is?
If we can get the Dragon Boat Race, that'll be a big ask of all of us, maybe next year.
We're done.
$2,500 to whom it may concern. $5,000 to the Second Chance Foundation. At Risk Kids.
Is that someone we've given to before?
Yeah, we have. I got a letter.
Which one is Karen?
Karen is to whom it may concern.
Ron, how much is the paddleboat?
4,000. Is this stand-up?
Florence, I'm going to do 2,500 to whom it may concern.
Are you sure? I'm fine to do it. Okay, okay. Out of which fund?
Designated.
Are there any other?
Florence, I'll split the 2,000 with Ron on the Dragon Boat.
So that makes it $2,000 per boat out of designated.
All right.
Another designated for the Southern, for the South Youth Leadership Development Institute, $3,000 is, I think you have a letter. If you don't, you can have one.
Florence, $2,000 from designated to the Hallen Park Neighborhood Association.
All right.
And 1,500 to the Peers Organization.
Anything else? Next, we'll consider a position fill request for an administrative support associate. Consider position fill requests for the detention facility for three corrections officer trainees. Consider position fill requests for the engineering department for a county road, equipment operator one, a civil engineer tech four. Consider position fill requests for the probate judge's office for an administrative support associate and two customer service clerks. Consider position fill requests for the sheriff's office for an administrative support associate and two deputy sheriff corporals. Consider travel training requests for the appraisal office and probate. Those are all the items to be considered in the formal session.
Let's go back to... Do you request the county commission? Who is that? What is that?
That is the, that is the position at our front desk that we have, it's been open for a while. We had to resubmit it. We've been using a student intern, and we're going to go through the process of trying to fill it again.
Okay, well, you just need to know when y'all, when we decide to go do that.
Next, we will go to our visitors. First, we have scheduled Sheriff Cunningham, but it looks like he has able substitutes here.
That's you guys?
Able bodies.
You are the able substitutes.
Um, but I...
For whom there is no substitute.
I'll be honest, I don't see anything particular to the sheriff's office to be presented unless you have some other comments.
Struck out again.
Thank you for, while you're standing in the well, thank you for your work this week. I know it was, that had to be with the baby.
It was tough.
It was a tough, a tough assignment, and y'all handled it. Y'all take care of business, and that's what you do every time, and you're deeply appreciated.
Thank you very much. Sheriff Cunningham is sponsoring a seminar statewide for corrections and detention facilities. He actually put the curriculum together, and that's where he is right now.
Okay, good. Thanks.
There was something on waived rules for, I think it was Kelwell?
There was something on, there's something in...
It's a contract with Kelwood Food Management.
Right.
For inmate food services.
Kelwell, like so many employers, is currently suffering a staffing issue. Some days, only two of their employees show up. And with that being said, originally, contract was amended a few months ago where we took inmates out of the kitchen, and they supplied all of the employees. Because they're currently suffering severe staffing shortages, they've approached us and asked if we can bring the inmates back to assist. Of course, that will change the conditions of the contract that the commission has to approve. They don't know how long this will take to go back to the prior agreement. It could be a few weeks, it could be a few months. But in the meantime, we were paying extra money for them to supply all of the labor. Now that they're not doing that, it's going to obviously cut back on what we pay them.
That was my question. We didn't get a copy of the contract, so I didn't know what option three looked like. And my question was, what exactly are we saving by this? In other words, they're, they don't have the employees, so we're supplying jail...
Yes, sir. Labor.
Labor.
I don't know.
What, you know, you know the financial effect on that contract? Anybody?
And while she's looking for that, is that a satisfactory work setup relationship with the, with the combination of the Kelwell and our inmates?
Yes.
Works fine?
Yeah, we did it before.
The inmates just do cleaning, basically, sanitation, cleaning.
Pretty much, yes, sir. The food preparation is mainly from the Kelwell employees.
That information, I don't have. It was in the bid document. When they submitted a bid, it was with three different options. One with them supplying all the employees, one with inmates providing assistance with, I believe, just unloading supplies or something like that, and a third one where inmates did more, so...
But in our packet, we didn't have them.
No, we just had the amendment to the contract.
So it's going to save us money, obviously.
It is.
Yeah, but how much money is my question?
I'll find out. Myrtle was supposed to send it to you. We were going from option A to option B. That was our proposal from the sheriff. And again, it is temporary.
I mean, I don't, I understand. I don't have a problem with that.
We'll get that.
Just, you know, if we were, we were paying them to do something, you know, and now they're not doing it. And I want to know how much less are we paying them?
We'll find out. Yes, sir. This is an issue with Kelwell nationwide. They expressed to me that every facility that they work in is suffering the same problem.
And this is an issue across the country everywhere, because people staying at home, drawing a check until that check money runs out, and they'll come back.
That's not my issue.
Right.
My issue is they're not supplying the employees. So I want to make sure we're not still paying them the same amount of money we were paying them before they were.
Well, we're not.
Now, on this other issue, people staying home, if, maybe if they paid more money, people would not want unemployment, and they'd come to work.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's what I think the problem is. I think the problem is you're asking people to come to work for $8 an hour. All, if you'll notice, every, all the employers that are claiming they can't find employees don't pay any money.
That's not, that's not a fact.
Who want to go to work for $2 an hour, $2 a day? Plus tips?
It's not a fact.
You know, if you, if you paid people decent salaries, a living wage, so that a person doesn't have to have three jobs to come to work, to make a living, to pay, to support their household, then they'd come to work.
There are numerous employers willing to pay 15, 20, $25 an hour. There are also salaried positions, and they're all looking. Yes, there are some lower minimum wage jobs struggling for labor, but there are also higher-end paying jobs struggling for labor. It's across the board.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I agree with that. But if you, if you're paying $15 an hour for childcare and your job pays $14 an hour, what good does it do you to go to work? Who's benefiting from that situation? It has more to do than people getting extra money on unemployment that's keeping them from going to work. There are other reasons. And this commission shouldn't sit here or its members and express that as the main reason. It isn't. There are people who have childcare, who pay as much for childcare as they make. And so, yes, they're better off staying home. Once they've had to do it, now they see it. You know, they're actually losing money by going to work.
All right. Let's agree to disagree.
Pay the folks. Pay the folks. They're coming to work.
I don't have any issues with waiving rules today, because we've got to get inmates fed.
Myrtle's on her way here with the figures, Commissioner. And I will say, the moment that this issue surfaced, I reported it to Sheriff Cunningham, and we took immediate action. We, we don't want to pay for anything.
If you only got two employees trying to feed that many inmates, that's going to be issues.
Well, they actually have more employees, but they're not coming to work.
Not, but two show up.
Right.
To prepare me.
And that's the issue.
Myrtle is coming with the figures.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Hannah Hawke. Executive Director Tommy McKinnon with Baptist Healthcare Foundation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I believe that each of you have received a packet of information regarding our proposal for partial funding of the Montgomery Cancer Center's mobile unit called Driving Hope. This unit is intended for screening, education, and prevention, and will travel throughout the 12 counties of central Alabama to bring needed healthcare services outside the walls of Montgomery Cancer Center and directly to the people within these counties. Does everybody have a copy of that? If not, we've got some copies as well.
Yeah, everybody should have. It's a white envelope.
All right, very good. So we have, we embarked on a fundraising campaign for this just a few months ago. Since that time, we've received nearly $200,000 towards our $360,000 goal through corporate partners such as Alpha, Alabama Power, the Joy to Life Foundation, Daniel Foundation out of Birmingham, Regions Bank, and more. And we're seeking partial funding of $40,000 from the county commission. Just so you know how we arrived at that, we're, in total, from the 12 counties that will be served, we are seeking a total of $100,000. We then broke that out on a pro rata share by population, which is, obviously, Montgomery County being the largest at $40,000, down to Wilcox County being the smallest at around $1,800. So the additional $60,000 that we're hoping to make up to reach our $360,000 goal will be raised with continued corporate partnership and private partnership, and as well as requests from the public and our patients as well. So this is a Baptist Healthcare Foundation project to partner with Montgomery Cancer Center in order to do this. This is my colleague Susan Reed. She's the administrator for Montgomery Cancer Center. And between the two of us, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. McKinnon, any of the monies that the hospital received from the CARES Act, can that be used, or that I know we had, what, about $460 million that was supposed to help mitigate the impact of COVID? And I'm just wondering if any of that money could be used to further the cause of your objective?
That's a great question. Do you want to answer that? Or you prefer? Okay. So it's, again, this is Baptist Healthcare Foundation project. Certainly, the hospitals received a significant amount of money to care for COVID-related expenses and patient care. So this is well outside of the criteria that we're able to use that money for.
Have you approached the city for an amount?
We have not yet, sir.
Are you planning to ask them for an amount to participate? Most of your population is in the city.
Yes, sir. We're trying to ask anybody and everybody that we can to participate.
And so just cancel screening, this vehicle will be used primarily for, elaborate on that just a little bit, please?
I'm happy to answer that. So at Montgomery Cancer Center, we know that when we screen and we educate and we provide prevention opportunities early, that clinical outcomes are often more advantageous for the patients. And so this type of unit can be used at schools and educate children about different things that they can do to keep a healthy lifestyle to prevent a cancer. It can be used at colleges to talk to children in college about some of the decisions they're making to use smokeless tobacco or different things. But it can also be used with our corporate partners to provide screenings on site, that if somebody can't get away from work, maybe they can come on their break to the unit and actually be screened for cancer. So it has a lot of reach and has a lot of citizens that it can help in different categories.
Yeah, I'm very supportive of this because of the reach it makes to the low income in our rural areas of the county that don't have the means or the transportation sometimes to get, I mean, sometimes it's 30, 40 miles from their house to your closest facility. So this allows you to take it to them, and that's why I am supportive of it.
What types of screenings are going to be available in the, with the mobile unit?
So to start, there are six types of screenings that can be offered in a mobile unit that don't require imaging. So prostate cancer, lung cancer, colon cancer, breast cancer, skin cancer, head and neck. A lot of times, people aren't aware that something that is changing in their mouth might be an indicator of a head and neck cancer. So those are the types of cancers that we would first advocate for with screening. We've been able to secure several models of different anatomical parts of a body so that we're able to show visually, this is what a breast cancer lump might feel like if you feel it yourself. This is what a change in your skin, a mole, might look like that you could be aware of to screen yourself at home. So I think those tools, combined with the clinical resources from the Montgomery Cancer Center, we really could make a difference.
Is it screening for uninsured people?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So there's no charge?
No charge for our services.
And after y'all get the mobile unit, y'all won't be coming back to us again for any reoccurring cost or staffing or nothing like that, just one time?
That's correct, sir. And in fact, I do want to impress upon the commission that this is, while a sizable request, it also lasts for the entire lifetime of the mobile unit. So our goal is to be able to schedule approximately 150 dates or more per year for the mobile unit to visit across the 12 counties. So let's just estimate that at approximately 12 visits within the Montgomery market. But multiply that times eight to 10 years of the lifetime of the program, and so you can see that the investment has really spread out over a long period of time and has a lot of impact on the immediate community here.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in, I'm supportive of this request with, with, with one caveat. I need, if we make this donation to go towards this mobile unit, I want a list of any of the 12 counties who do not participate.
I think we can deliver that.
Mr. Chairman, I have one last question, please.
Yes, sir.
I'm just wondering, I'm a healthcare provider, and I know if we're screening for colon cancer, should we get a positive rectal, a positive sample on the stool? Are you all going to be following up on that, or that individual's going to be out there knowing they're positive?
No. So what is unique about the program and what Tommy and I've talked a lot about is that at Montgomery Cancer Center, we understand that connecting to a healthcare resource is the complicated part of this, right? That navigation into the right healthcare resource for that person. So what we have designed is an operational program around it whereby a nurse practitioner and a registered nurse who are tethered to the Montgomery Cancer Center will help navigate those patients into a care provider that will meet their needs. So if we do have a positive on a colon cancer screening, our job is to not lose that patient and to navigate them to the right healthcare that they need, whether that's something in their community or whether that's something here locally in Montgomery.
So I will have, you will be able to get me a colonoscopy, even if I don't have any money, if I'm tested positive?
Yes, sir. That is our, that is our aim.
Thank you.
If I may, I would like to just add one more thing. In addition to the capital cost of the unit itself, Baptist Health will be covering, Montgomery Cancer Center in particular, will be covering an annual expense of approximately half a million dollars to actually operate this, which we're not asking the community for.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm good with doing it from the joint designated revenue.
Still would be interested in what the city's going to do.
That per capita that you talked about, Mr. McKinnon, in terms of Montgomery County, 40,000, Wilcox County maybe 1,800, how did you arrive at that again?
Just simply based on total populations by county, and then... Just simply based on total populations by county and, and then arriving at the percentage to break that down into those incremental amounts.
Yeah, I, I, I hope, hopefully, it's fair to say that, that, that we will help you. I mean, I, I, it sounds like my colleagues might not be ready to make a decision today, or are we? Um, I'm certainly supportive.
Well, I'm supportive regardless of what the city does, so.
Well, if the city gave, what, $20,000, that mean you would only need $20,000 from the county?
As long as we reach our goal of $360,000, sir, we're, we're hopeful that, uh, as many, uh, partners will partner with us.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We will, uh, deliberate it for a while, we'll let you know.
Thank you for your time.
Looks good, though, okay?
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Next, we can hear from Alvin Tucker with Fortitude Leadership Academy.
Good morning. Thank you, guys, for giving me this opportunity. My name is Alvin Tucker, the founder of Fortitude Leadership Academy. We're located at 5280 Von Road. We've been there since 2017. We are a mentoring organization. Uh, we're a little different from others because we start with the early age preschool. Uh, we go into, we meet the, uh, young people through MPS, and we develop a relationship. Uh, we started back in 2017, uh, by visiting the schools. We've, um, acquired fifteen young men that have been with us since 2017, and now we're up to 20. In 2019, we had a summer program, summer enrichment program, where we introduced the guys to several things from, um, life and soul skills, museum visits, we had speakers to come in and so forth. So, this year, we are requesting funding. I've submitted my budget to you guys. We're requesting funding to assist, to allow us to, uh, guarantee 20 young men into the program. But our location is center of Montgomery, so therefore, we actually have young men all over the, uh, city. So, we, um, although we're, although we've acquired 20 young men, we're sure that the guys in the community also that, uh, lives around, that homes around the community. So, we're expecting up to about 25, but the request today is to support our young men of 20. We, we, our organization, as far as mentoring is concerned, we do community-based as well as school-based. So, that and our, the program that we're, um, asking for the assistance is the Good to Great Program. So, all of these gentlemen, we meet them five years, and they're, some of them are in middle school, and we have some guys that are in, in high school now, but we're following them from grade school all the way into their college careers. So, unlike some of the other organizations, because there are many mentoring organizations here, we're trying to capture the kids at an early age before they get to those, those middle school ages where it's kind of difficult for them to listen to the adults. So, our request today is we're asking you guys to support for $10,800, which will help us to move forward. Now, as far as the city is concerned, we've submitted a request, uh, Mr. Pruitt, they have not approved it on some of our other projects. They have approved our virtual school in the past, so this is, they have not, uh, submitted any funding for this particular project today.
Mr. Tucker, tell us a little something about your partnership with, uh, Brubaker.
Man, Brubaker, Brubaker is, so, Brubaker Miss Wright, she's a principal, and, um, that's in our location, that's in our, actually in our district, so it's right up around the corner from us. So, we go over there, she has preschool, she has kids from, uh, four years old up to the second grade. So, I have a team of gentlemen, men, uh, it's five of us, we go into the schools, and it's a little bit different with the kids, we have little babies, so we can't go in and teach, uh, life and soul skills, you can't have a curriculum to actually have a class lecture. So, what we do, we incorporate some type of fun activity where we may use kickball to teach, uh, teamwork, or, or, uh, if we're talking about anti-bullying, you know, we make sure that the kids understand that everyone is important. So, we, we cater towards, and it's a little bit, you know, for men to come in. And the beauty of it, a lot of the schools, you know, and thank, we're thankful for the principals, but most of the teachers, educators are, are young ladies, they're doing a great job. But for us to go in and see these young men, they, we pull them, they're excited to see Fortitude come through, uh, because we, we just take, we, we take them under our wing. We get, we have a garden out there, um, I don't know if you've visited yet, but we, we have a garden that we're actually, because of course, we missed the spring because we started late, but what we're doing, we're preparing the land, we're, uh, pulling the old weeds up, we're gonna prepare for a fall garden, but we're also, the playground areas, old, the benches are old. So, what we've done, we're raising monies now on a side note to redo the benches. I've got a team of guys, we're gonna do all that ourselves. So, uh, we're, we're just there, that's one of the schools, um, it's kind of like our, one of our babies, and then also Cotoma. So, we're, the plan for this, uh, summer, although we have the young men there, one of the community service projects is, we've been designated to go to Cotoma Elementary as well as BPS, uh, Brubaker to actually mentor kids during the summer programs that they're gonna offer this year through MPS. So, we're gonna be train the trainer. So, we're gonna be taking our guys out with us to BPS and to Cotoma to, uh, actually mentor the younger kids.
So, you, you, you follow these kids all the way through high school?
Yes, sir.
And into college?
Yes, sir. So, now, we started in 2017. So, now, we have eleventh graders. So, we don't, we don't have any kids that have actually went off to college, but we've had some kids been with us since third grade, and then some join along the way. So, now, we have, uh, three, three juniors now, and we have a host of younger kids.
It's, it's, you know, I, 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 I went out and actually toured, uh, Mr. Tucker's facility and got a chance to talk to him and, and heard some testimony from one of our school principals that, that his group has worked with. And, you know, and a lot of educators and people will tell you that you usually lose the kids around, around middle school, around fourth, fifth grade. If you haven't really gotten to them by fourth, fifth grade, you're gonna have a problem with them going on in the junior high. And, and that's where they are, and that's, that's what impressed me about his program. Uh, uh, I'm gonna support you to the extent that I can. I'm hoping that I can get some fellow commissioners to come along with it. Uh, we're, we're, we, we, we need more programs like yours that are mentoring. It's, it's fine to, to try to catch a kid eighteen, seventeen, eighteen years old, but that's a tougher.
Right, absolutely.
They've already gotten into some trouble by then. I'd like to, like to, the programs really that, uh, are trying to grab these kids before they even start to get into that trouble and to get them involved. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I wanna, uh, designate $5,000 of what you need, uh, from my, uh, uh, designated refund, uh, funds.
I'm just looking at your budget, you're not being compensated at all, are you?
No, absolutely not.
Well, but what's the, there's a fee for the, the Tucker Center, and I assume that's your facility?
That's my facility. Yes, of course, we, we'll be there from eight. So, the program is a structured program from eight AM to three PM. As far as a structure, we'll have certain things that will go on during that time, but the building is open thereafter to seven o'clock. So, the funding for the Tucker Center is gonna cover those all day, um, for the six weeks.
Well, Mr. Tucker, I appreciate what you're doing also. I'm gonna recommend to the commission that we, uh, give you the $10,800 from the joint res, designated fund, if that's okay with the rest of the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I, I, there are a lot of great summer programs, and I know I've been personally helping some summer programs. I appreciate Commissioner Harris's willingness to help out of his funds. I think this should be, um, something we do individually.
Mr. Tucker, I'll get you to call me. We're, we're doing a mentoring program for all those bullies that are bullying your kids. We're doing it, uh, the city of Montgomery, Parks and Recreation, the YMCA's, the Boys and Girls Clubs, um, Charles Lee, that's my child, Dwayne Rembrandt.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ken Austin, we're all partnering together. Actually, we have our second meeting tonight with mentors, but we're addressing those twelve, fourteen, eighteen-year-olds that we read about in the paper every day, committing murders and the, the violent crimes, and that's who we're trying to mentor, the ones that didn't go through your program.
Right, right.
And really have no hope. So, I like what you're doing because you're trying to stop.
Counter that, right.
You're trying to stop them before they get to our program.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I wish we didn't have anybody in our program, but the only ones that we are targeting or working with are the ones that already have been the high, lack of a better term, at-risk youth.
Right, right.
Uh, so, I appreciate what you're doing also. And just like you, the rest of us on this, we're doing this without any compensation.
Absolutely.
And that's what really means a lot to me, is that you, that shows that your heart's there.
Right. So, so, we've been doing this since 2017, the venture, my wife and I started. And when we, my wife's a educator, so we've been in the school system. So, we, we're meeting the guys all over Montgomery, and their parents are getting them to our location. Uh, you mentioned the event tonight, I am aware of the org.
Are you a comic six?
I'm, I'm, I have another engagement, previous engagement, but I'm aware, I'm in the loop, I'm on the, uh.
I'll come next Tuesday.
Okay. I'm, uh, in the loop with the organization, but what we're trying to do, as you mentioned, we're, we're seeing in the school system, we're seeing these young men at an early age that had the potential to be an issue as a middle cha, middle school child. So, we're incorporating, uh, we're having to baby things down, but we're teaching them skills at an early age so that you guys won't have to see them for a long. But we do run into some young men that we actually have forwarded over to Charles because I have a relationship with him, some of the other mentors, but our platform is trying to reach the babies before they become an issue, so.
You know, Mr. Tucker, the, you can't correct our problem in Montgomery, and I can't, Charles Lee can't, none of us in this room can, but if we all come together, and that's kind of what we're trying to do with this mentoring of Montgomery group that we formed, is we're trying to bring all of these people that come to us, all these different mentoring groups, and bring them all together and see if we can all kind of work together.
Right.
You know, you've got the young ones, and then I know Sheriff Cunningham does a great program with sixth graders, uh, Darryl Bailey does a great program with fifth graders, I dare. We hear from so many different groups that come here every week and, and has mentoring programs. So, that's kind of what we're trying to do, is partner with everybody, not take somebody else's place, but all work together, uh, to try to do something. We got to do something. I mean, every time you pick up the paper, there's a young person involved in a violent crime here in Montgomery, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm, 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 I like your suggestion because it seems, under your suggestion, he would be fully funded. So, if we could get, if the commissioners, uh, to join in doing that, uh, I'd like to see the, the full amount come from the designated.
I, I don't have any problem, Mr. Chairman, getting it from designated revenue. I think perhaps we, we need some criteria, uh, by which we decide who gets from designated, who doesn't, because, uh, up to this point, it seems like it's just arbitrary. And, and, yeah, and so, I would, I would certainly be in favor of wanting designated revenue.
They are, so, so, we have kids, and I'll, I'll just give you a few numbers here. So, like I said, because we go into the school system, we actually, you know, if we were to talk about districts, we actually represent every, every district on the board pretty much. We have four, in District, in District Two, we have three kids, District, um, District One, we have three, District Four, we have four, District Three, we have four, District One, we have six. So, we have kids all over Montgomery, and the reason is because we met kids through MPS. We go through every, pretty much every elementary school here. So, we've developed relationships, then the parents get them over to us. So, everybody here is represented through Fortitude at some point.
So, those districts, are they school board districts?
They're, they're school, they're school, and now, some of, some of the kids are in the, as far as their homes are concerned. Some of them have homes, but then, most of these are school districts. So, you know, it, it, we, we represent everyone, and, and the parents will get, bringing them to our location because we created the relationship as a young child, and so, they've been with us since 2017.
Mr. Tucker, we appreciate your presentation, and we, we'll be helping you out, okay?
All right, thanks, sir. Thank you all.
Next, we can hear from Ann Sykes with the Montgomery Education Foundation. She has shared with you a, a package of, of books that she will be collecting.
You mean, you want these back here?
Come live in our office, we've got more like this, and it's a beautiful day every day to see the richness, um, and we've got kids waiting on those books. So, yes, selfishly, I'll, I'll ask them back, just pass them.
I kind of like this box.
Mr. Senator, echo finish.
Harry Brown Mel.
So, I'm gonna be fairly short and direct, I hope. As y'all remember, I was here a few months ago, updating you on the investment from last year and the pivot that we made with MGM Reads as a answer to the circumstances with COVID. Obviously, as we all know, that has not stopped, and this disruption of that learning, we're seeing tremendous impact on all of our kids, and it is all hands on deck. And it's not just this summer. If there's one message I could say to all of y'all, we've got the next year and a half to two years, and it's summer, it's after school, it's extended day, it's weekend, it places that we can support students in regaining what they lost. It wasn't their fault. The reading aspect, as we all know, is critical. I will tell you, just as a little nugget, library funds have not been provided from the state for more than ten years to schools on a per-school allocation. Our community has a book desert, especially in our underserved communities, and in homes, there are not enough books or any at all to support our students in reading. And that became abundantly clear when our students had to rely on being at home and other resources. MGM Reads last summer provided 6,000 students, 6,000 packages, 3,000 students of two books like you see, plus also in there is tremendous amount of support for at-home, for themselves, activities to do, support for parents who are not comfortable maybe in saying, "I don't know how to help my child with reading," very accessible, and most importantly, they are culturally relevant. Children need to see themselves, their stories that they don't hear, their stories that are important in attracting kids to want to read. We have an opportunity this summer to double that, and we have a need that's even more urgent than just the opportunity that I feel passionate about. The opportunity is for us to deliver 12,000 packages, I mean, I always say this wrong, I'm sorry, I have to think about, but, um, our opportunity this summer is to deliver 12,000 books, to double what we did last summer. The city is already, um, providing 75,000 to help us reach that. We've got about 130, 132,000 to make the whole to double. What we would like to do, under the city part, we're doing that with Parks and Rec, and we're doing public housing. I'm so committed because, you know, our long, um, commitment to reading on wheels and getting deep into the county, or getting a broad spread. A way that we can do this is through our YMCA's, getting further out to get kids every week for six weeks, take them a package that's similar to what you see, these types of books, to every week, along with the supports. Um, I will tell you, we continue this into the fall for a targeted area of school, and after the distribution, just after two weeks, there was a 200% increase in the reading on their online program that they use in the schools. We know it works. So, simply put, my ask is, it will take $66,000 for us to reach the other part of the doubling. I know y'all need to consider that, whether it be other funds, things that might be available, um, and I'm happy to answer questions.
I just have one, well, I don't know if it's a question, or, well, I guess it's a question. Uh, with the, uh, President Biden's American Rescue Plan Act, I know there's millions of dollars to help fill the achievement gap.
Right.
And I would just wonder if your organization has begun to look into how much of that money might be coming to you to do the well, the job that you all are doing so well?
Uh, we were there at the very beginning of making sure we saw every opportunity. We are not an education institution that are a local education agency that would qualify to get direct money from those monies through the CARES Act. Those come to us through, they've come to us through the city act money that they've received. They come to us through, you know, second and third hand if someone else has received them that qualified. But right now, the one, the only one we ever receive came through the city.
I, I think that you, you might not qualify directly, but I think you might be the type of agency that, that an entity like the county can help through some of the funds that we are, are poised to, uh, to receive from the federal government to offset the effect of COVID. And this, this is definitely a program that, that does just that. I know your organization, Ann, I know, I've seen you work firsthand, I know what you do, uh, for our kids, even before the pandemic, uh, when you were addressing that brain drain that occurs those three months during the summer when they're doing nothing, and, and now more than ever, we really need that effort. So, I, 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 I would impress upon my fellow commissioners to really consider this as, as, when we start to think about things that we can do with the funds that we are about to receive, that we, this is one of the things, uh, it's a big ticket thing, 66,000, you said it was?
Exactly.
Well worth it, I think, uh, and, uh, this is one of the things I think that we should
We're not skimping on the quality.
Probably consider in that, in that light.
Right. We're not skimping on the quality. A lot of book giveaways, books are books, and they're important in every child, but we think it's gotta be more than just books. They really need to be intentionally curated and selected and have attached ability to make them more impactful. Commissioner Harris, also, we, and I think y'all know, we won't do anything without having accountability and data and be able to pinpoint exactly where and what happened and how it happened, and also using those lessons of how we expand and inform all the other work that we do. Nothing's done in isolation.
66,000, uh, is the total cost of the program?
That would take us to be able to double. Um, 130,000, it gives us the 12,000, um, books distributed. Like I said, the city, we already have a commitment in, um, for the 75,000. commitment in for the seventy-five thousand.
The Board of Education, they partnering.
Not at this time. They, everything's into the launch summer school piece. If y'all don't have any questions, and I do hate.
What's the time on this? What, what?
It's urgent. I will tell you, we want to start June seventh, or June fourteenth, and run six weeks through July twenty-third. We do have to get the books ordered, and that's, that's hard. I will tell you, we already, through our other funds, are doing Warrior Hill and Flatwoods. So they're going to be getting those books right off the bat. So we get as deep as we can to our two, you know, northern and southernmost, working with Mr. Williams and getting those programs ramped up. Okay? It is urgent in the sense of timing. So, and I know that may be hard, but we're, we're, we've got all of the books. So if there are no other questions, I hate to take your books back, but pass them to Mr. Singleton, and I will, but I'll lure you to our office if you want to come see more, and as they come in.
He's trying to keep his books.
I do wanna read how Henry Brown mailed himself to freedom. I read this to my grandson.
I wanna know how long it's gonna take you to read that book, Dan.
I have sample questions and activities for you all, so.
I asked for it.
I think that, that covers all of our scheduled visitors. You want to address the?
Good morning, Commissioner. For those that don't know me, I'm Wes Richardson. I'm a captain with the Sheriff's Office of the Administrative Division. Commissioner Harris, Myrtle brought me some information that I can share with you about the savings regarding that waiver rules item. Currently, they're paying two dollars and one cents per inmate, and it will go down to one thirty-two. That's a saving of about, based on our current population, that is a savings of about four hundred and forty-eight dollars a day, or about thirteen thousand five hundred per month.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So can that move forward as a waiver rule item?
Yes, please.
No objection.
We have a, as future agenda items, a bid award to Troy Cable Vision for a private data network for information systems. Alcohol license application for special events for Festival Latino for the June twelfth event.
No, yeah, no issue.
Amendment number one to a contract with Bonded Filter Company to provide air filters and service.
Next, gentlemen.
We have a personnel action to consider hiring a recreation leader at pay grade AO5, step three. James Williams is here and can answer any questions you have about that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I saw that. I saw the request, but they were talking about extraordinary qualifications. I didn't see a resume or a vitae or anything that would tell me what those extraordinary qualifications were. Do you have a vitae?
Do I have the, that information?
Resume or something?
I've got his application back in my office. I was gonna give you a little history of this candidate, which, his experience is from high school to collegiate, and also his past work performance. He has worked here at the county as a temp. And I was definitely pleased with his performance. So he's familiar with this position, or he worked before it was actually created on a temp. We, we, we've actually, you know, entertained these requests before, but usually they're accompanied by something in writing that will let us know what are you, what are you basing it. It's one thing to say somebody's extraordinarily qualified, but, but what, but why are these? I mean, I, you know, I'd much rather see something in writing on that. I mean, I guess you can express it. You can tell us what it is.
Correct.
When you, when you submit something like that to the commission, I think it ought to be supported by something in writing that sets out the justifications for bringing a person in at a, what's it, two steps higher?
Two-step, correct.
Yeah. It should be a little bit more than, than a paragraph and a half.
Jane, what step was Tucker at when he left?
I think Tucker had been here roughly three years, so he was at a step three of four before he retired. And this act, this position itself, I talked with personnel, we were gonna, the discussion was upgrading it anyway due to the salary with the job performance, what it required. But with us getting ready to go into the summer program, we kind of moved forward and said we can talk about that in the future, personnel, as far as upgrading this position.
So no increase to your budget, then?
No, no. And again, this individual, before this position was actually created, I think the person before, Ms. Alexander had retired, but it was not a full-time position. And the county Parks and Rec had expanded. So he came in as a temp and did a good job doing the summer program for six months. But I, I can get that for you, Commissioner, some information. Is that it?
Any more questions? I guess not. Okay, thank you.
All right.
So we'll provide some additional information for the next meeting. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. I submitted two well-qualified individuals who's anxious to serve on the volunteer, the North Montgomery Volunteer Fire Authority Board, and I was.
What?
The, the North Montgomery Volunteer Fire Department Authority.
Right, that's item number eight.
And I was hoping that we could get those names on the next agenda.
Yes, sir. It's item number eight. We have a memo with those names.
Next, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also attached is the legislative committee, ACCA's Legislative Committee's final legislative report for the two thousand twenty-one regular session. We also have a letter from Director of Corporate Development Shelby Stringfeller with the Chamber of Commerce regarding an executive session concerning a commerce or trade matter. We can recess from our formal session to that executive session and adjourn from there, if that's.
Say that again.
We can recess from our formal session to the executive session, and we don't have any additional business, I believe, to take up from the information session. So we can adjourn from the executive session.
After we do the call?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay. Executive session after the call?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody need a break?
I do.
Did we, he already did. Number eight, the board of commissioners. Did Isaiah mention?
Next agenda.
Okay.